So what's another topic?
Well, I know Mr. Martin has something that Ms. Peterson brought up for him.
So, one thing that you guys have talked about. Shannon.
I want to make sure she stays awake.
One thing that you guys have talked about too is redistricting. And I would say it would be nice if the feeder model was consistent and instead of Dearborn High drawing from four or five, maybe going one or two and being clean in terms of that vertical articulation. The other piece-
We attempted that the last time we redrew boundaries, but it wasn't perfect.
Right, and I, yeah, the other piece is, I'm probably making it seem better than it is in terms of us being able to handle it, because I don't want to say that we can't. But there is a definite impact on kids, teaching, and instruction and learning. There just, there absolutely is. So, specific to Dearborn High, I want to impress upon you, we do need some help in whatever way it is, but I don't necessarily have a preference, I just, we just need something.
Some relief.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I love your point about the cleanness of the boundaries. That is one of the things that I think we should pay attention to.
That wasn't one of your proposals, as far as keeping the feeders clean, if you remember from May. That was one of the things that we had talked about. Also, you know, we still are looking to get more students. And I don't know if you caught what Adam said when he said Tim G., Tim Kinsky. Okay, you know, looked at us and look, at the end of the day, and we can be as creative and clever as he am and her staff and everybody else that's involved with it, and I know Scott does the same thing and Adam and went after two as far as trying to find. Because at the end of the day, we're always looking to say, you know, we can look at numbers and all that, but at the same time, the most important thing is kids. What are we going to do that's going to be, what programs can we offer that are going to be best for our students? And no matter how we shuffle it and how creative we are, we need more space. And Adam's being very, very kind and patient, but at the end of the day, you ask him what he wants, he wants an addition.
He wants, yeah.
He wants an addition, and he needs, and he needs an addition.
He wants it on Tuesday. Next Tuesday for the start of school. Can we do that, Mr. Wall?
We got a portable out back here, they'll give you for right now.
I'm going to tell you what Dr. Green was. Dr. Green is bursting at the seams when it comes to the amount of students who want to be in STEM and the amount of students she can accept. So she has to break a lot of hearts every single year because she only has so much space even for the students that she has. He, as much as we talked about moving the Eunice kids from Fortson, she broke down and cried. She cannot leave, her Eunice babies cannot leave her. She wants them with her for her life. So she's not trying to get rid of any kids. And anytime, you know, she has the opportunity, hey, anyone that wants to be at Fortson, send them my way, I'll take them. You know, the kind of, the way this country was built years ago. Mr. Caswell wants that field house. He wants a few more students. He doesn't want 500 more students, but he wants a couple hundred more to help build the program and some of those things there.
I want to sit in our home bleachers and look across and see visiting bleachers in our gym.
That's it.
At a wall.
That's it. See, so that's truly what they want.
Well, thanks for the backup.
Why didn't you bring the other four?
If he had a mic, he would have dropped.
I want no more school of choice.
Dr. Green.
When it's a clean, that, when it's cleanly moving from middle school to high school, you mean they come, they come from one middle school and everybody goes to one high school?
Correct.
All right.
We can't do elementary to middle, it's just impossible, you know, to have all the middle schools, you know, all elementary speed to the same middle school. It's very difficult to do. I mean, you could, but it'd just be a mess. But to do it from middle to high school, that is a lot more plausible and a lot more sensible, especially with the feeder track model.
All right, so which plan is the cleanest that you presented?
Oh, no, no, no. I can't, I can't give you that without consultation from my associates.
Oh my God, is that complicated?
It's complicated, yeah.
I guess so, all right.
Dr. Maliko, you got interrupted.
Maybe it's time to bring our bosses up here.
Smith and Stout to Dearborn High, okay? And then, then we're going to have to add though. Because if you do Smith and, I'm sorry, Smith and Bryant to Dearborn High. Because if we do Smith and Bryant to Dearborn High, we still need space at Dearborn High. Then the dilemma becomes what we're going to do with the Stout kids, all at Etzel Ford with Salina. Okay, but then your numbers at Etzel Ford are still not going to be where we-
I was going to say that still, that still detracts from Etzel Ford.
Yeah, so-
So is that Plan A, B, or C?
It's, it's, uh-
That's not, that's not-
An amalgamation of plans.
It's a combination, okay.
I will get you a clean one though.
So you're going to write it up?
I promise, I will, I will give you, I will get a clean one to Dr. Maliko and he can share it with you.
Trusty Nasser, I know you have a point to make, but trustee Thorpe, you made a point and it got lost because I know that we, I had the principals. Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to return and make sure you got your question answered or the point that you were making.
It was just more to the idea of when we start talking about the different options that are on the table, way to go about narrowing.
Yeah, take the ones that are like an absolute no-go, off first.
That's what I was going to say, yes.
And that would be helpful to us as if, okay, if you say that's off, or go ahead and study that to see what the cost of a ninth grade academy-
So I guess everybody gives their arguments for the things they-
If, if you even need to argue it.
Yeah. Yeah, Dr. Maliko and then we'll go to trustee Nasser.
We're excited with Dr. Green taking over the STEM as we realign with the retirement so that, as you can see, she's very passionate. So now having a consolidated principal, I think is going to be real positive over there. And then I just wanted to mention too, because some people have mentioned this to me, and even the team, we just talked about it. You know, I know we did, and I just want to put it out there, you know, we sold the Howe building and you had mentioned. But there were things with that Howe building that it wouldn't have alleviated our problems. One of which is because the design, when you go through there, is you're walking from class to class. It really wouldn't have been optimal for preschool unless you had major renovations and the roof was in dire need of. So there were issues there, and then you add in the location of the property with the traffic and everything. It really, so that really would not be, as we've said, we have land other places that we could expand. So we didn't necessarily, and that's not a prime location, so I just wanted to put that out there.
And that Howe money is still in our bank account. So we'll just put it towards a new solution that's, that's more-
Yeah, the problem has always been that we have, where we have the buildings, we don't have the students.
Yeah, that was in a no neighborhood.
That's been a problem for a long time. Trusty Nasser.
So I was thinking of what, what can we do that's going to give the quickest relief to Dearborn High, which obviously nothing can get done this year, but with some of these expansion options that we had may not be available for two years. But if we can look into some options that we can have at least some addition of classrooms next year to give some, some immediate relief, even though it's not, it's not immediate, it's in a year from now. And then the year after, have some more relief. Because this is, this is a lot of money during a lot of time with students in school in session. And if we could start off with one of the options like the buffet style where we say, okay, let's take, you know, option X, for example. I'm not even going to say, say a letter, but we say, okay, let's start with four classrooms. We can get started on, get started on that. That way next year, we have some type of relief.
And if I may- And I think just before we get there, I also think, let's start eliminating options that we don't agree with. And I'll put something on the table. I mean, we have to, to me, we have to be fiscally responsible.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Fiscally responsible.
And the idea of a ninth grade academy or even a new high school at this point, to me, is not being one, fiscally responsible, and two, from the numbers that we're getting, I think in new high school, is not necessary at this time. And a ninth grade academy is just that. It's a smaller new high school that's going to cost us a lot of money. That's going to, basically, as we heard today, have to have everything that a high school would have for one, for one grade. For one grade level. I, I think those two options, at least for me, I, I don't support. And I don't think that they're options that are feasible.
You said two options.
One is the new high school and two is the ninth grade academy.
Yeah, what's in that?
Number three and number four, she wants to scratch those.
I'll second that.
I do too. I don't see, and I was on the task force that studied them, it's just not feasible. It's, it's not realistic. And quite frankly, I think we have ways to finance the additions that we don't have to, to sell a whole new high school building to the community.
The numbers don't support it. When we're looking at the projections, we're not seeing that much growth where it makes a lot of sense.
No.
And, and our growth peaks next year, which is-
Yeah, by the time you were to get something like this up and running, they'd be saying, what'd you do it for?
So, so we're trying to get something done, so when we have our peak next year, we're able to fulfill, fulfill some of this, so.
So we, we have a couple of things that need, but we're not going to, we'll not bring back the new high school proposal or the ninth grade academy. I also philosophically disagree with treating the Fortson students differently.
Yeah, the equitability of it is.
That's kind of problematic for me, but. One other thing on trustee Hamud's point of fiscal, which I know we're all worried about. It bothers me that we have capacity at Etzel Ford that was added during one of the, the big bond of 2002, and it's not all being used. So I don't feel comfortable with having capacity unused. So I think boundary, redistricting boundaries is a given for me.
Yeah, I'm-
Second, I agree.
I'm good with the redistricting and, and in addition to Dearborn High and however we go move forward with that.
Trusty Thorpe.
From, from a business and a numbers standpoint, you've got two facilities that are over capacity and one that is under capacity. So from a business standpoint, it makes total sense then to redirect, try to better utilize that space. And I know that is looking at from more of a cold numbers standpoint. But it just doesn't make sense to, to add capacity to something that in a couple of years is going to be potentially empty. And we're going to try to find use for an empty space then.
I substitute taught at Etzel one time, and I remember speaking with one of the teachers, and he said, it's so simple. We just have to change the boundary lines and we'll get Etzel Ford closer to capacity and limit the capacity at the other schools. And I said, yes, I wish it was, it was that easy that we could, we could do something like that.
It's only simple in theory when you're dealing with parents. It's not so simple.
I've, I've heard people from the community saying things about the boundary. Oh, I hope they don't change the boundary lines, don't do it, it's going to cause such a commotion, and it is. And so that's something that we have to think about too.
It's very unpopular.
You know, and that's true. And at the end of the day, as we've learned, we're not here to make the easy decisions. And any decision we're going to make, we're eventually, you know, going to either, not everybody, you can't make everybody happy. But at the end of the day, you know, the citizens of Dearborn paid a lot of money to put this facility to use. And now it's not being used the way it should be. And, and I think that that's something we really have to consider. And that's why too, I am for redistricting instead of the bound, in terms of the boundary lines.
Boundary changes, I think we're all in agreement on that.
We balance the-
And in particularly in keeping the middle schools clean, I think everybody is in agreement with that.
The one thing I was going to ask Mr. Moshur is, with those students that we're talking about switching to new high schools, if we do an addition at Dearborn High, which is going to happen, we pretty much solve that capacity, it seems. We're getting pretty close to it. And from what we've heard from Fortson is they're making it happen. Would it be possible to allow the families that are in Woodworth, Smith, Stout, that are currently at one high school and we're saying, all right, you're going to a new high school, give them a choice? Or is that just get too messy?
No, you can give them a choice.
We, under certain conditions, we could grandfather them in.
We grandfathered in.
But we'd have to try to keep pretty tight because otherwise we'll end up-
Because we're not expanding to others, it's just for those families that are being impacted.
So, so the choice then would be for the, just the three years or beyond that? So if I, if I have a third grader-
I would, I would be phasing it.
Oh, no, 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 just ones already in the building.
Yes, okay, so just for the three years?
Probably Mr. Moshur could even tell us some numbers by September 11th.
Here, I'm going to give you some numbers for now, okay? If you split Smith and Bryant, you're at 1840 at Dearborn High, just those two schools alone. So Smith, you go to Smith, you go to Bryant, regardless of where you live, where your boundaries are, you go to Dearborn High, Dearborn High is at 1840. If you do Stout, Salina, and just the current section that we have of Woodworth, where you have the 20 students about per year going to, that's, you have to split one. Woodworth is the most logical one. So you keep Woodworth, so the same kids right now who are, so you're really not changing a boundary. The same students who are currently going from Woodworth to Etzel Ford go to Etzel Ford. You will be at 1640 at Etzel Ford. And then if we, you do Stout, all of Stout, all of Salina, and Stouts enrollment is growing by the way, but anyway, all of Stout, all of Salina, and just the 20 per year from Woodworth, we're at 1640 at Etzel Ford. So 1840 Dearborn High, 1640 Etzel Ford. And then all of Lori, all of Eunice, and everyone at Woodworth that's north of Michigan Ave would be at 2600. And you only would be switching boundary lines for the current Eunice 40 kids who are going to Dearborn High and are being bussed across town. And are being bussed across town, which, you know, people argue-
They would be very happy because half of them were school of choice at Etzel Ford.
Yeah, and, and you know, you're still, we're still going to have our few that are going to want to stay at Dearborn High because their brother went there, or their uncle went there, or whatever. But at the same time, that's your cleanest split. So you'd have Lori, Eunice, and pretty much 90% of Woodworth at Fortson, and they can accommodate 2600. And they're always going to have a little bit of a influx of students, all three high schools will. But at least it'll give you that, that little, that little margin for that. Because you're at 2600 at Fortson, a little bit on the high end, but at the same time, with some of the programs and some of the other offerings, we should be doing okay. I mean, they're managing almost 3,000 now, so.
What, what does Fortson have now?
I got to go get my other sheet, hold on.
2,800?
No, 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 that's, that would be-
About 2,700.
That's projected.
So it's a difference of about 100 students at Fortson.
Right, it's, it's, yeah, you're not, now, if we wanted to, if, if you really want, if you want to build the field house, which I think is a terrific idea at Etzel Ford, then, you know, I love my, you know, I love my athletics. I have to put that out there, sorry. But anyhow, so if, if we, if we did something at Etzel Ford, then you can take the Woodworth, the ones that are west of Greenfield, that section there, so you're going to take 200 kids from Fortson that were originally going to go to Fortson. So that'll bring Fortson down, down a little bit. And it'll bring Fortson down to 2,400, and then it'll take Etzel up to 200, so 1840 at Etzel Ford.
But that sounds like more than what we were originally talking about, because now you're saying all Smith to Dearborn?
All Smith and all Bryant to Dearborn.
And then the kids that were at the Eunice-
All Stout, all Salina.
That were at Dearborn now are going over to Fort- so a lot more people are being impacted with that idea.
Correct, correct.
If I can add, because I've heard you say about feeder, so that, that's the philosophy then too. It sounds like the board is, based on what I'm hearing, is boundary changes seem like, the question is how far. So if we want to go with the feeder fit, it's going to mean more drastic, or not drastic, but it'll be more changes. If you want to, you know, and it sound, with that, you'd still need the expansion, you know, some building. But if you didn't want to go as drastic on the boundaries, then you have the way to do like those alternatives that were presented, like for example, some of the Woodworth students shifting to Etzel to bring that capacity. So it just depends on how far we want to go. And again, we can always go back to the community as we plan, when, once we did boundaries, looking at that. But we also know that people in their local schools are going to-
You know, we go to the community, they're, all of them are going to say-
Just like last year with River Oaks.
Yeah, we don't want to move.
Yeah, nobody wants to move, that's a given.
I think you're going to have less transportation too, you're going to have less bussing with that scenario as well. And that's some of the changes, people may not object to as much. Like you said, with the Eunice change, if we say, okay, all of Eunice-
Oh yeah, they won't object.
Yeah, the Smith to Dearborn High, you're probably, you're going to have some objection, I'm sure. We're going to have some objection regardless, but if Smith to Dearborn High, I think, I think a lot of the Smith community may be in favor of that situation as well.
And this plan would go with the two-phase, I mean, with the 14 classroom expansion, is that, it would need the 14 at Dearborn High?
No, because you said 1,800 at Dearborn High.
1840, would be 1840 at Dearborn High.
Okay, so you could go with this-
So you'd only need about six, eight classrooms.
Could we do the seven?
Seven classrooms.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Because quite frankly, if we did the seven classroom one, I almost think that we have enough. Because that was about-
Mr. Martin, I mean, you're welcome to come back up and clarify, add, add light to that.
Just so you know, these are not like, you know, these are averages. It's not like if I-
Yeah, maybe Mr. Moshur, you can get us a presentation with clean lines on September 11th.
Exactly, with the projections and everything else, because there's variances and so on when you look at these numbers. This is just flat averages that we have, like over the last five, six years, I think, I went five years actually, five years of, you know, of our students. But if you want like clear-cut numbers, yeah, that's, that's not something I can do in 10 minutes over here, so.
No, I'm amazed you can do what you did.
If you were to drop, if you were to drop our numbers to 1,850, is that what you're saying? I don't necessarily know that you'd have to add on at Dearborn High.
Because again, you've got a couple hundred students that are not in there at any, all the time.
Correct.
Okay, let me just put something else out. Mrs. Alcandre's proposal, I, I like philosophically to expand, to continue to expand, aggressively expand those programs. Programs at the Michael Berry Center, and then if we, in the future, if we need space there, if we have the demand for space, I would like to see that. I think it's a terrific program, I like continuing that. And I would want all, all three high schools to encourage their students to do that. I think educationally, it's really beneficial to everyone.
Yeah. So I have from one of the prior slides, our internal numbers for this school year at Dearborn High, just under 2,100. So this, this 1,840 is with the cut, with the change of the, of the schools, correct?
Correct, change of the, of the feeders.
And what's the capacity for Dearborn High right now?
1775 is listed as the ideal.
Yeah, I was going to say I-
I'm sorry, as the max.
1625 is the ideal, 1775 is the max. So I'm not going to turn away classrooms, but I think you have an opportunity here to be both fiscally responsible and do what's right by kids instructionally and really, no, yeah, and if nobody's going to be happy, my suggestion would be, let's just do the right thing and rip the Band-Aid right off. And, and do it right, knowing long-term that this is just going to have to be what it's going to be. You're going to have to build every district. You can't do both. And I would tell you, so he encouraged me here, I, I don't really want another 14 classrooms at Dearborn High. That's, that's a lot of extra space. And I think to your point, Ms. Lane, you put that many kids in a building that's not built for bathrooms, hallways, it, it's not structured for that amount of kids, really it isn't. So that, I don't know, just be candid.
So you're saying if we do the boundary changes, we don't even need to do any additions, is what you're saying?
He's the numbers man, if his numbers are right, then-
You, you still might need a couple of classrooms, but it would be minimal, conventional.
You could possibly just do the four classroom extension.
In the courtyard or-
Yep.
Yeah, that extension.
Because that could give you up to another 120 seats.
Yeah.
But would we do the, the extension or would we do this? Which one would be cheaper?
I would say coming, I would say coming west off of G-Hall, going toward outer drive, yes.
Because you would lose the classroom if you went into the courtyard.
Right, so you'd only have three.
And that courtyard, that courtyard right now has that, the yellow piece is that hallway. So you're doubling up the amount of kids in there, that hallway isn't super-
It's, it's more narrow than the other hallways.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
I need to ask Mr. Moshur a question though. On that plan, just to kind of read, because I know we had a lot of things we were throwing out there. How many students were coming from Fortson back to Etzel and how many from, was there any?
What do you mean from Fortson back to-
Oh, was it just from Dearborn High? That was the only shift you were saying?
No, he, he had-
Yeah, what did you come up to?
He, he was saying if there was the shift of the 200 students or so that would drop the 2,600 down to 2,400 and have them at Etzel, which would take it from 1,640 to 1,840?
Up to 1,840, yep. Okay, and then were you shifting students from Dearborn High as well?
No.
The shift she's talking about, and she's, she's right on, is, we, we haven't done that yet. Those kids are already going to, or currently rather, going to Fortson. So if we shifted them to Etzel, which is what we talked about earlier, if we shifted them to Etzel, Etzel goes up to 1,840 and brings Fortson down to 2,400. So Woodworth would be our only one that's not a clean fee.
But it would be a majority.
But we just got to watch, we're not sending too many students, you know, we want to be careful with Etzel too, that we're within our numbers.
We don't have vacant classrooms, I want everyone to understand. We don't have vacant classrooms. So I think people, you know, the team coming out again and looking and seeing the ebb and flow. So when I hear, I, I believe we have 1,500 on the books now, we're expecting Tuesday. Maybe end up somewhere around 1,450 this year, if the trends kind of stay the same. We, we, maybe, but we, we don't have empty classrooms. So I want to just throw that out there, that, you know, if we're talking a swing to 1,800 and whatever it was, then, you know, there are classrooms, yeah, the fieldhouse, thank you.
So you don't want 200 more students?
Oh no, I would take it, but we can't do it without expansion then at Etzel. Yeah, with some type of building.
So you may have to build eight classrooms, but it might be four with me and four with Scott. Oh.
Except, don't forget the-
And the fieldhouse.
Well, he is determined to get that thing fixed. Well, here's the thing, here's the thing. If, if we do it now and add on to Etzel Ford by, by the fieldhouse, because the pool is getting old. So we're going to have to do something in the next 10 years with the pool. The gymnasium needs all kinds of work. We don't, our baskets, for example, are not even retractable, there's only five of them. The auxiliary gym, I don't even want to talk about it, the floor is, is, yeah, the floor is nice, but-
Wait a minute, is, is Etzel though, is that, those type of things, do we need those at Dearborn and Fortson as well? Or is that just problematic at Etzel right now?
It's way more problematic at Etzel. I mean, Fortson, yes, we would love to have more space for phys ed classes. I can tell you phys ed classes are very difficult to run there and so on. But again, if we switch, you know, our, our enrollment and so on, the number's lower, now Fortson can manage that a little better, you know, but Fortson's landlocked too, so they don't have that option. And Dearborn High doesn't have it really too much as far as building a fieldhouse.
Can I just make an observation though? When we talk about the field house with the pool and all this other stuff, when I looked at the bonds that passed and failed, the ones that failed traditionally were the ones for athletic facilities because people felt that those were extras. And especially when you're only talking about one building getting it, as opposed to across the district money, it gets to be even more problematic that the voters will pass a bond to, to, because they won't get that, it's because we want to add classrooms. They'll just hear it's going for a nice grand new gymnasium at one school. And that's a lot tougher sell in the community to get, get that kind of money from the taxpayers.
It is, but the counterargument to that is, okay, well, at Lori, we put in a new gym floor this year, which was, you know, almost $100,000. At Dearborn High, we just totally redid the baseball field and it's absolutely spectacular and the softball field.
But the people didn't see it in a bond on a ballot.
That's, that's a good point.
And I, and I, that's what our job is, is to go to the community and that's a lot tougher sell. Because I talk to community members all the time, and that's, that's a lot tougher sell for them to take when all I hear on a daily basis from this community is, our taxes are too high. Our taxes are too high. You try to sell them on this in their face, we may not get it.
Passing another bond, I, I'm getting that as well.
Yeah.
And it doesn't solve our time issue, right?
I just want to add that, don't forget the people that are leaving the high school during the day. And I just want to point out with Dearborn High, 1,850, you, he has about 250 that are leaving the high school during the day. So it's, so he isn't at capacity because of that.
That's a good point.
So I don't know that, as, as Adam said, you may not have to add.
And if we're talking about just a couple of classrooms, whether it's Fort, Dearborn, Fort, Etzel, but something smaller like that, I don't even believe a bond is necessary.
We might be able to, yeah, come up with the money ourselves.
Between what we got from the county and what we've got from the sale of Howe, we should be able to finance it internally.
I, I agree with you there, that's what I was thinking, is if we can keep this small, we can do it ourselves.
We could probably still, I, I mean, I don't know the way the numbers would work, but we've got that, that bond for five years. And it's bringing in 75, 7.5 to 8 million a year?
Correct.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want to say that we're putting all the money into one facility at Etzel Ford, because then we've got every other building a little upset with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like to keep an option open for the Heights campus as well. Because if they're at capacity now, if they can expand their programs, I would love to see it.
I think, I mean, I, I understand the political part and that's, that's on that side of the table. But I think something has to be built to alleviate the problem. And I'm not just saying it for Etzel, but that will benefit the three buildings. It will benefit instruction and it will benefit kids. So although it's not something tangible that they can touch, feel, and see, they're going to feel it and see it in different ways, in the hallways, in the classrooms, in the cafeteria and such. So I would throw that out there.
So are we all kind of on the same page now with?
Seems like we're getting there, yeah. Well, we've taken quite a few off.
So it seems like the idea would be redistrict, redistricting, but not the little bit that was originally put in any of these slides, but more of a large scale if we're talking about- about War Smith, Eunice.
To balance the high schools.
And then by doing that, it would reduce the building at one or two of the buildings.
Reduce the out, the financial outlay, right, I think it's important to structure it in our mind.
And the other item that, that trustee Nassar's gotten to a few times is, it can move a lot quicker.
Yes.
Cause redistricting could happen for the twenty-eighteen, nineteenth school year. The four classrooms, I would believe, should be able to come online in a year and a half?
Year and a half to two years, depending on how fast.
No, extreme makeover, school addition, we can get it done quicker than that.
Yeah, can you get the state to move that fast?
Well, with, with just the expansion, you said it was G Hall, I think would be the, the quickest viable option for putting an expansion on at Dearborn High. We'd have to, you know, go back to the same exact thing for Edsel with options of where we'd be putting the classrooms. But I, I, I think if we're all moving in that direction, it gives us the quickest option, it gives us, um, using our money internally, and, um, I, I think, I like it.
I would just like to support, cause that's where the caution is, is that, yes, if we are looking at four, then we do need to do Edsel expansion, because I just don't want us to get in a situation where we over, you know, as I kinda mentioned aside to President Lane, that we have to then look at, so, because if you look at the options that we presented on slide thirteen, we're basically saying that we can fix Dearborn High alone with less of a expansion and some redistricting, but you can't just, you know, you need expansion at Edsel if you wanna also redistrict from kids that maybe to alleviate Fortson, so...
I think we're there.
Yeah, okay.
And I would think then, again, expansion then at the Berry Center will relieve what's going on at the other schools, so while Edsel doesn't necessarily have open classrooms, if we can get some of those students going over to the Berry Center for half a day, now we've got some of that capacity back.
Absolutely.
Good.
With that, I think we've eliminated some more options, like the fourteen classrooms over at Dearborn High, we can go ahead and at least moving forward, we know that that's, just with the conditions of the buildings alone.
As long as we know that, I, I guess we're gonna ask Abe, firm up those numbers.
On September eleventh, we should have a presentation then.
What those moves would look like.
A presentation?
I mean, you know, we...
Yeah, just give us the numbers.
Until, until we've seen boundary lines and numbers of kids, I, I don't, I won't rest easy.
And, and also kind of, um...
That's gotta be on TV.
Yeah, and also, um, a cost estimate for, for four classrooms at Edsel.
So what I'm hearing is the four classrooms at Dearborn High, just to make sure we're on the same page. Some classrooms at Edsel Ford and rebound, uh...
Redrind the boundaries.
Or whatever the number, whatever the number may be, because it may require more, and then another, and then the third, or the fourth thing is looking at the Berry Center expansion, and some of those things too, we had even talked about, uh, like the studio, like we could potentially, may, we don't even necessarily have to move the Dearborn High one, but maybe we can open up other things so that we have more students that can get involved in these career and technical programs, and we have space over there. So I'm hearing that we...
We have land.
We have land, yes, we have land, not space.
We don't have space.
No, not space. So we can go ahead with some studies, architectural to look at, uh, at Edsel and the Heights.
Uh, we'll just take the media center off of the Dearborn High study and...
And four classrooms here, we can, I know, of course, we have to do it to get the numbers and it's gotta be, but that's kinda seems like the directions everybody seems to be.
And that's why this conversation's so great, because this conversation about the Michael Berry Center wasn't even on the table at first for us, or at least, you know, it wasn't...
It's been something we knew was simmering on the back burner.
Yeah, so, sorry, sorry to cut you off, so if we do an expansion at Michael Berry Center, are we adding more programs or are we just expanding?
Adding more programs.
Adding more, okay, great.
Cause you'll have more students leaving the campus during the day to go to the Berry Center.
Right.
Which actually was the purpose of the Michael Berry Career Center in the first place.
Yes.
It, it, its original intention was to help siphon off during the day students. It kind of has expanded into a lot of different things over the years, but that, that was what was the vision for it.
We have to remember, you know, shortly after the center was built, then, you know, the Michigan Mary curriculum came along, so that impacted career and technical education not only at the Berry Center, but across, you know, it changed the whole purpose. So now some of those requirements have been relaxed and we are starting to see some of the impact of that.
And I could just reiterate one thing, the ninth grade academy and the high school are options that are off the table.
Off the table.
So would we be able then, once we see the updated numbers on redistricting, to potentially vote on September eleventh, so we can get started on everything?
Well, here's my, here's the one caveat I will, cause I was on the boundary task force, and we had a task force, which was, and Mary remembers it quite well, a lot of people, I don't think, and actually, I don't know who else was involved, you were on that, right Glenn, you and, um, am I?
I wasn't.
Mr. Jafar was on there.
Oh, was it, Mr. J, okay, so, we had, yeah, were you the co-chair, okay, so, I've been on so many task forces over the years, I can't remember.
That's why he's serious gonna help us if we...
But, um, if, if we just go ahead summarily on September eleventh and say, eh, this is it, these are gonna be the new boundaries, everybody, without having community, uh, it, we are going to have a very full room the following meeting with a lot of angry people. Uh, we, we need to make sure that when we do this, that, because right now, this is, this is not live, we're, the, the, the only people are gonna see this who are gonna be the people who are gonna think about looking at YouTube or maybe reading, um, Katie's article if she's hung around here long enough.
She's here, she's still here.
So we need to make sure that, um, we present this in a way that, um, they feel included, even if we know that the decision is our, ours to finalize, so I'm not sure that I would, um, be comfortable.
Yeah, I, I don't think we could move and take a vote.
What about the construction side of it for Dearborn High?
It's our money. Mr. Wall, what do you need authori- do you see a direction, or when do you officially need board action on approval to get moving on Fortson?
Eventually, we have to take what are we, our conceptual plans and actually cost it out to more greater detail, taking consideration what Jeff said, let's start looking at the HVAC systems, looking at the underground. Right now, they're just a conceptual drawing, we'd have to flesh it out to actually get to a true dollar value, so it would probably take more than just a September meeting to actually go through that. Uh, then there's the financial aspect of it, so that's probably something the finance committee will probably wanna meet here in September to kinda look at the financial options.
And get the numbers, yeah.
Now that we've kinda narrowed down the, the concept, I wouldn't wanna just limit all the concepts to just the four rooms, we wanna look at the actual facility at Edsel, cause we really haven't gone that far down that line, and seeing maybe it's something we have to do internally, which will cause maybe an extension onto the fieldhouse or some other aspects, so I don't wanna limit it to us at this time. But I think you narrowed down the subject area where we can now look at a smaller field of considerations, and I think we can come with more detail, and Abe would love to do a presentation at the next board.
Oh, I know he would love to.
If it's on a fieldhouse, I'll do it tomorrow.
So I think we give you a further defined expectation.
No, but we definitely have to present that, uh, or whatever, we have to do it in a live presentation, we have to show people boundaries, we have to talk specific numbers, all of us.
Yeah.
And I know you've done, uh, an amazing job in your head figuring out who's on what side of greenfield, and, I mean, I, I do remember trustee Pachlikoff is right, we got into massive discussions about, wait a minute, if you shift the boundary in the, along the railroad tracks, anybody who was around remembers, just moving it one side or another, David's shaking his head.
Made the numbers change.
You know, the, the numbers are all over the place, again, wait a minute, there's forty-five kids in that neighborhood, so we, we really need to see those numbers.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta polyplot everything.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, my buddy Mark Andrews will help me, he helped me with getting the Woodworth numbers, and he did that in a half an hour, so...
So like we did a couple of months ago when we gave the direction as to what we wanted more of, are we gonna be, can we do that on the eleventh?
Yeah, I, I think we are, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna suggest, if you're comfortable with it, we have, uh, Mr. Mashur's presentation with the numbers of where we could see the concept, we have Mr. Wall start moving on the direction we just got on construction as far as the, the footwork he needs to do.
With the financial component now, more of a detailed explanation.
And then we start planning for, it sounds like the board would like some boundary either way, I will get with Mr. Jafar and Mr. Mustin, and we already have a plan that we were gonna put through, that we were gonna go out to the schools, um, and we would have teams that would go out, and we had already talked about this, so that we would get that community or, and you saw Ms. Ali Bazzi put the plan out over, it would take a few months on the boundary situation, but that way we have an opportunity, we did it last year with River Oaks when we had a little bit of switches.
I'm just looking at Mr. Casbold and thinking that he and some of his team may need, maybe Mr. Jafar, uh, as former principal at Edsel, need to be at some of those meetings too.
Yeah, we've gotta, we've gotta be...
You have Woodworth that realizes they may be redistrict, they need to know what their, they need to know great programs that are at Edsel, uh, different programs that are gonna be available, they're gonna leave Fortson, but, I mean, maybe Mrs. Alcaldri needs to be there, you're gonna be okay, so...
Cause we have to get into the ancillary, like the cafeteria, do we still need to do the extension at, uh, Dearborn for the cafeteria, cause it's very crowded now? How the impact on the cafeteria at Edsel, so there's a lot of things we have to further on conversation as we get closer and closer to the truth.
Yeah, no, I see us having a conversation in October and November as we start to get into more details.
The twenty students that are supposedly on the south side of Michigan that would be going to Edsel, do they really have to follow that, and we can't just say, okay, the whole school goes instead of having these twenty students?
We can't, I'd say eighty more students to Fortson, but, I mean...
You, you said twenty?
Twenty, yeah, over four years.
Oh, oh, oh.
So you had twenty-seven hundred done at Fortson.
Him just don't want to give any students.
No, she doesn't.
But I know we're talking about the feeder, yeah.
It does just keep the feeder clean.
It keeps the feeder clean.
So at least we know what our next step, what our next steps are, we've narrowed it down, I think we, we all agree on that, and...
I think we needed to have this conversation so that we could see what all the...
One small question about the feeder, the STEM kids, where do they fall?
STEM kids, we were talking about that when you got the talk channel over there. STEM kids, we get about twenty to Dearborn High, ten that go to Fortson and thirty that go to, I'm sorry, thirty that go to Fortson, twenty to Dearborn High, ten to Edsel Ford, roughly.
So you're talking about adding forty-one, forty-eighty-one, twenty?
Correct, like, like Adam said, wait a minute, the numbers you gave aren't gonna add up to what are even our current enrollment is right now, and I said, you're right, because I didn't include the STEM kids and I didn't include the ratio for new enrollments.
Do, do a lot of the STEM kids go on to the DC MST though, so they're half a day in the high schools as well?
This will be the first year.
I was gonna say, it's, it's only gonna be the first year.
Yeah, so just based on the number of applicants, you know, I was very interested in that data, pretty much.
Pretty much, that's what I'm thinking, is, is that they're still gonna be in the same kind of situation.
Okay, well, Dr. Maliko, I think we've got some direction, and I'm really pleased that, I think that, uh, we've reached it through consensus, uh, it seems to be like, satisfying the needs of the district educationally and financially for our taxpayers, I mean, it's really taking that into account, so, and we're even, yeah.
One quick question, when, when, uh, we take this back to the community and wanna make sure we have everybody's input, just usually, how does that take place? Do we go back to, for example, to these different middle schools and then we just invite everyone, it would be after school, is that what usually happens, and it'll happen at, okay?
Yeah, we would, and, you know, with your history, like, last year when we did River Oaks, we went to the schools, it was public knowledge, we came, we took input, then we revisited our recommendations, um, and I know that was more massive, and we are talking about a bigger change, so Mr. Jafar and his experience and Mr. Mustin, but we would, we would take it under consideration, and when we did River Oaks, um, last year, uh, the board might recall that there were some things that we then tweaked a little, but then, you know, based on the input, but then we ended up changing a few things back with some logistical, you know, issues of, uh, when we looked at specific boundaries, like the community wanted a lot of grandfathering in for, you know, indefinite, and we decided that after careful consideration, that we couldn't do that, so we'll take it into input. Now, we did do other things, like through boundary line exemption, a school of choice, we've tried to work with families, so we've done those, but we weren't able to make it a, a, an absolute, and so that's kinda what we did last time, is, you know, brought ideas back to the board after, you know, always taking the input, and sometimes there's some good suggestions or ideas and...
There, there were a few absolutes, if you remember, that we stuck with, which is, we were going to stick with that, those communities going back to River Oaks, uh, you know, when, like, any new students that lived in that area were gonna go to River Oaks. The other thing was that we were not gonna offer transportation, so we stuck with those, but, you know, the, the one, the students that were there, and they said, okay, well, how about if I have a third grader and then I have a kindergartner coming in, no problem. At first, we didn't, we didn't really think about that too much as, you know, about those types of situations, but when we went to the meetings at the schools, people suggested it, and it was a valid suggestion, obviously a sensible one, and, and so we, we said, okay, no problem, we'll, we'll enact, you know, enact that as part of the plan, and we, we made a few other things as well, that, so it's not like, yes, there are a few things, so for example, if the board decides, hey, we're going to change the boundaries, then we're gonna change the boundaries and, but at the same time, we'll still take community feedback with regards to, you know, whatever it is that they may have, uh, when it comes to little things that we can work with.
Yeah, there might be little things like that, like, that we're not thinking of, like railroad tracks that cut through neighborhoods and...
Right.
Uh, I, I wonder if the three executive directors might have any other issues that come to mind that we should think on as well? I mean, I assume that you're in favor of cleaning up the boundaries, that's, no, everyone but Ms. Peterson, right?
You got a thumbs up.
No, she said thumbs up.
You're gonna have to clean up the boundaries or clean up the board.
Does everyone give a thumbs up on the two? All three of them gave a thumbs up, so...
Yeah, I, I think when we have these community discussions, we need to emphasize that we're looking at the schools as a whole and the students as a whole, and so we're trying to do everything we can to make it better for everybody, and so while some schools get affected more than others, we understand that there's gonna be some hardships going through this, but when you take a look at the city as a whole, you know, that's...
Yeah, I, I do think stressing the equity, uh, the educational equity, uh...
That was the conversation we had the last time, it doesn't, it, emotions, emotions get married.
I mean, we can't, we can't have one high school falling down to thirteen hundred while another one is nearly three thousand, that's just unfair.
No, but the argument always is, I bought my house, knowing that I was going to send my child to this school, and that's why I bought my house here, now you're changing it up on me, that's almost always the argument you, you will hear from the parents, and I get it, I, I get that they, you know, but, but the fact is, is that we have a responsibility, we have a responsibility to the district as a whole, and, and that's what we're, we're doing.
And, and any student who is prepared can go to any one of our schools and get a world-class education, yes.
Absolutely, and that's the bottom line that, you know, a lot of times people don't understand.
Every school, every school is going to give that student what they need, and, just be prepared.
So I just wanna say, I've had an awesome day, actually.
Oh, good.
Started with the teachers, addressing elementary, trying to be positive, and, and, you know, I think I've told the board many times, you know, I'm always optimistic, the half glass, half full. Uh, I was over with the special ed department, really optimistic, positive, we had some positive videos, uh, it was a long day, but a great day, now with all of you, you know,
was a long day, but a great day. Now with all of you, you know, I, while I was with the secondary teachers as well, they had PD, the executive directors were out there. Everybody was around the direct, you know, the district as we prepare for our students on the fifth. But then today just tops it off cause I felt like what a positive dialogue. And that's why it really has been an honor for me to serve with the board. And I think it was a real positive brainstorming solution here that we still have some work to do, but it's given us direction. So again, I've had a real positive, awesome day. And I thank the board and everybody who's been working hard to get us there. And especially, you know, all the high school principals and everybody for coming through. And they helped us with some of the ideas.
Yes.
And for everything that was prepared.
We have been.
We, we were informed.
Yeah, boy.
And it's nice to have experience from the past, you know, you and Mr. Jafar.
Okay, good, good, great. So with Dr. Maliko. And the fieldhouse is still an option.
We don't wanna crush all of his dreams.
I'm not having you walk out.
Gotta record it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Share it on YouTube.
Dr. Maliko reminds me that there is the all-staff picnic tomorrow at eleven o'clock as well. So anybody who's able to make that. So, yeah, ready, set.
And enjoy the last few days of summer.
Yeah.
One other thing, Ms. Harris has put together, you, we were gonna, so this is for the convene to the board. We, we created a new Google schedule that will be helpful to the board. You know how we do the invitations? We're gonna create a schedule where you could actually subscribe to and you will put in there and populate a lot of events in the district that you may be interested in. So you will see it on a regular basis. So she's worked on this and.
I'll share it with you tomorrow. It says Board two thousand seventeen eighteen and it has graduations already in it. So you'll get it tomorrow.
Oh, God, I don't even remember. She already has, she's done an outstanding job where I can tell you, my schedule's already full for the year. It's already pre-populated.
Five years out?
Yeah.
Just one, just one.
Just one.
And her birthday.
Yes, happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Joanne. Happy birthday to you.
Cha cha cha.
Okay, this is adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.